It's 5:15, I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome everybody that's in the audience. Would you please stand and recite the pledge with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving to be board, review of board norms. Brenda, would you like to?
The board developed norms are: decisions will be based on a board's strategic plan, its mission, and what's best for students. The board will act as stewards of tax dollars. Board members will complete foundation work to be prepared for meetings. Meetings will be efficient. All perspectives will be voiced and heard. All board members will maintain a professional decorum.
Thanks Brenda. We have no public communications. Is there any conflicts of interest to declare? Hearing none, moving to consent agendas or motion to approve. Motion by Brenda seconded by Gail. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those approve. Say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Moving to the regular agenda, we have nothing under correspondence. Moving to be recognition of Brittany Carpenter. Is she here tonight? Would you like to come forward? Gail, would you like to?
Well, I'm trying to wait till she comes.
Oh, okay.
Just try and make her talk and then get up here and never sit down anyway. This is a big deal. Alright, here we go.
Brittany Carpenter is the daughter of, oh, Kimberly and Sean Carpenter. Brittany is being recognized for receiving the four-year North Dakota Music Educators Association All-State Award. She has been selected and participated in All-State Choir and this year in the All-State Vocal Jazz Ensemble. She is involved in JHS Choir, Show Choir, Blue Jazz Band, and Drama. She'll be attending Wortburg College to major in music education. Congratulations to Brittany for this outstanding achievement. Brittany, see, Brittany, I'm the only one in the room, I'm sure, that does not know where Wortburg College is. Help me.
Wait, really, Iowa?
Iowa, good for you. Congratulations.
Was I the only one on the email?
Thanks. Thanks for asking, Gail. So. Moving to C reports. Student council report. Student council, not, okay. Moving to number two, American Heart Association report. Mary? Yep?
I am Mary Riser with the American Heart Association, and I just wanted to take a moment to put a spotlight on your five elementary schools. They have partnered with our association for years with Jump Rope and Hoops for Heart, and I just wanted to share a few things that I have observed in getting a chance to work with them. This year I had a really great opportunity to be in front of the kids, to share heart-healthy messages and promote what you're already doing with wellness. And I found your students to be very respectful and very caring, inquisitive, and enthusiastic in working towards a goal and helping other people. And so I just was really impressed and wanted you to know what a great culture you have created amongst your students and staff. I would also like to take just a moment to thank Pam Schmiedeberg, the physical education teachers. Pam Schmiedeberg, Mr. Beach, David Beach, Barbara Williams, and Michael Smith for their effort that they put into working with the programs. And just really am so honored to work with your school and thank you for helping us do the good work we do and for promoting wellness within the schools. I also did want to mention, I have the mission sheets that are the piece that we promote, what work we're doing in North Dakota. And one of your students from Roosevelt School is the face of the American Heart Association. He promotes healthy eating at the national level with us, and we're just so honored to work with you. So, I work with 140 schools. Your district is one of the only ones that has 100% participation in elementary level. So, thank you, Jamestown Public. So honored to work with you all.
Thank you. Moving into number four, art center reports. Cindy?
Hi.
Hello.
Thanks so much for having me. I just thought I would wanted to come share with you all a little bit about what we've done in the schools for this past year and invite you to a couple of upcoming events. So, for the 15-16 school year, David Dobbs was our artist in residence for the entire year. He's worked in all of the classrooms, grades K through 5, on elements of design, space, rhythm, color, and narrative. He has extensive experience drawing and painting and doing stop-motion animations. So, he worked to include technology into his lesson plans as well. And then we also extended our programming and worked in the middle schools. Again, we haven't done that for a couple of years. So, we had Rob Sutherland from Ashland Productions, and he taught an after-school program at the middle school. They worked on theater, movement, and stage presence, which I think is really crucial at that age range to really work on sort of confidence and professional presentation. So, that was a really great program. This week, we have our theater coming. They're Lightwire Theater. They're based in New Orleans, and they're going to give two productions of their show Moon Mouse on Wednesday, April 20th, this coming Wednesday at 9:00 AM, and Thursday, the 21st at 10:00 AM. Those will be at the high school. As usual, we organize busing for all the students in the district to get to the high school for these performances. And support materials for the performances and study guides have been passed around to all the teachers throughout the district. We chose Lightwire Theater because they make their costumes out of LED lights. They perform in the pitch black. And we like them specifically because their performances are a really, really good illustration of how the arts and science and technology and engineering can come together and work together to create a beautiful product. So, I wanted to show you what that looks like. Let's see if we can get this guy to link. Just a quick trailer. How come it didn't want to link up? Thank you. So, these are actually actors in costume that have LED lights attached to their bodies. So, these are people performing on stage that act out each of these characters. And we just thought this would be a more interesting experience for the children rather than interacting with traditional theater, which is also a great experience as well. What's that? The entire school district. Yep. So, we bus them all to the high schools. Bus them all back. You can go. You're welcome to go. It's Wednesday and Thursday mornings. Yep, Lightwire Theater, production of Moon Mouse, which is what they'll be showing this week. So, then, last year when I came to speak with you, it was right before our Dale Chouli STEAM project, which is Bonnie Tressler worked with all of the 5th graders in the district on this collaborative project. It integrated art-making, recycling, collaboration, chemistry, math, and engineering. And we were lucky enough to have the North Dakota Council on Arts fund a documentary of this project for us, which I wanted to share with you too, because it illustrates how we took the project into all the classrooms and then brought them to the art center, taught them about glass blowing, taught them about presentation, all of that. So, I'll see if this guy will work.
This project started, I was sitting in someone's office, and I looked up and there was a plastic bottle.
Sorry.
And I went, "Oh, Dale Chouli. That would be an interesting final project."
It's only about three minutes, and so if we can reconnect it.
Dale Chouli's blow glass. Most of the time, he does a lot of real organic. Nothing is geometric, so it's organic. It's very inviting, inviting kind of art. I wanted something that the kids could relate to somehow. And I could really see how I could break the project down into parts that I could coordinate with all the schools, because I wanted everyone to be able to participate. It's a lot of fun, because with your team, you get to do a specific thing, and that thing is going to contribute to the end project, even though you don't get to do the whole project yourself. I painted bottles for the first class. They cut off the bottles of their bottles, which I then took to another class. It was like this revolving door of bottles. And then to get the kids to all actually have the experience of constructing something, they went into a classroom and they actually made a chandelier. So, that every child collected a bottle, cut a bottom off a bottle, painted a bottle, cut a bottle, wired a bottle, and contributed to a sculpture. I really believe that you need to integrate the arts in all other subject matter. So, when I get an idea, I'm always looking at all the different avenues. And I know John Offutt, the glass blower, and I thought, "Wow, this would be a really interesting way to approach this." We'd have the actual physical science. He could do the demonstration. We could do the recycling. We started it right around Earth Day. So, I started looking for all the tie-ins to other subject matter and then kind of refine it from there. Bringing the arts into STEM is very important, because research has shown that the interconnectedness between the arts and science is still so strong. Nowadays, the research is showing us how often the practices that artists do in creating their art are so similar, if not identical, to what the practices that scientists do in their field. And I think this is one way for our system to really get some deep learning and love of learning, not just rote memorization. Integrating not just art and science, but math and science, or any of those where the things overlap, is just deeper learning. So often, we tell the STEM people, "Well, you don't understand how the arts are woven into STEM." But I have also found a lot of artists don't really understand or won't acknowledge how STEM is woven into their work. And we need our kids to go off and have successful careers. It's going to take some kind of good problem solvers, which is what you end up with when you're creating that.
So, that was one of, that was last year's residency STEAM project and the documentary about that. This year's STEAM team, the STEAM team in Jamestown is Emma Mickelson, Lynette Ryan, Vicki Coombs, Bonnie Tressler, Miranda Leatherman, Rebecca Engelmann, and myself. They've been working with students on spatial learning, trying to fill a gap in common core curriculum, helping students look at a three-dimensional object and be able to translate that object into two dimensions and then put it back into three dimensions. So, you will be receiving one of these in the mail this week, which is an invitation to their final production of their STEAM project. The information is on the back. And you're challenged with this invite, because if you fold it correctly, it makes this pyramid, which is what the children have been working on, what a flat pattern, being able to visualize a flat pattern and turn it into a three-dimensional object. We are having a residency, a week-long residency with a dancer and choreographer named Catherine Adams, and she's going to be working with the 3rd graders at Washington and the 4th graders at Louis Lamour on interpreting this learning into movement, because movement has been proven to perpetuate remembering and longer-term learning. And there will be two performances by the students on May 6th at the football field, and you're all invited to that too. 11:00 AM, the Louis Lamour students will perform, and at 1:30, the Washington students will perform, and that's followed by a reception. So, that's how we've reinvested your funds for this past year. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Any questions for her or none? No, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Oh, Heidi?
I'd just like to thank the Art Center for their partnership also with the school district, and it's really exciting to see how you're tying the science and math into the arts and making it seem really fun for the students. So, thank you.
Moving on to number five, high school MTSS report. Julian Darby, would you like to come forward?
Good evening and thank you for your time. First of all, I have to tell you, last spring, Mr. Conway called me on a Friday morning, and I was in a pretty good mood. And he said, "Hey, I'd like you to be a part of this process. We call MTSS." And I asked, "Well, what's that?" And he said, "No, that's not important, but I really want you to be a part of it, and I'll give you more information later." And I, well, it's Friday. Yeah, I'll do it. I had no idea what I was getting into. So, this has been an enormous task, and I just want to thank everybody who's been a part of the process. It's been challenging and rewarding all at the same time. We handed out, excuse me, we handed out some placement pathways for you to look at. I'll be talking to you about English Language Arts today, and Julie will talk to you about the interventions that have come about as a part of the process with math. So, looking at grade nine, if you're there, okay, very thing, very first thing you'll notice in terms of the intensive group for our placement pathway, we have kept Read 180 for our intervention plan. The major change that you're going to notice is that we no longer offer block class for that. We will have two separate class periods for Read 1, excuse me, Read 180. And during the first class, they will proceed throughout that 52-minute period as far as they can get. And when they meet for that second class period, which is called English interventions, they will complete Read 180 at that time. It's also during that second class period where they will be working with various skills in terms of grammar, comp, writing, and that sort of thing for that second session. In terms of what we'll use to verify the progress, we'll continue to use Lexile scores. We did that in the past with our block class. We also have the Read 180 assessments that go along with the program. The major factor will be our STAR assessment. We'll also use that STAR assessment along with teacher perception to determine what kids would really fit best into this group. Now, notice it says intensive group in the 20th percentile. So, if they score in that 20th percentile, they'd obviously be a part of that group. If there's someone like from the strategic group, where it's from the 21st to the 39th percentile, and it would be a part of the teacher's perception at least, that he thought that particular student would benefit from the course, we would definitely consider that as an option. So, it's not just solely the STAR assessment in terms of being used for that process. The other thing you'll note is our block classes in the past used to meet for a semester, and then we would have a shift into the second semester, where this particular option allows our students to have English all year long. Okay? And so, we thought that would be a welcome change. I think I'm losing the battle with this mic here. Okay. So, that's the whole concept for grade nine. If you forward to grade 10, you'll notice that there's very little difference between the two. We're still sticking to that two class periods in lieu of the block. Okay? And so, they will meet two different times throughout the day for English. Okay? And like grade nine, we'll still use Lexile score to determine their placement, along with the STAR assessment and the data for Read 180, along with teacher's perception. And once again, they will be meeting all year for that, for those two separate class periods. Where, and we call that, and that, sorry, I forgot to mention the name change, where we used to call it block in the past, it's now Applied 1 and Applied 2. Okay? But essentially, we're using the exact same intervention. So, in terms of the intervention process, we will have very little change. You'll actually have more contact time in the end because of the second class period. Okay? So, we looked at that as being an advantage. If you move forward to grade 11, really, nothing has really changed there. We've had Applied 3 now for a few years, and we feel like we're having success with that right now. We currently offer two sections of Applied 3. We see that as continuing into next year too, along with Applied Communications 4. I believe this is the first year we've offered that for two different classes. And looking at this year's juniors, we look, anticipate having two sections of Applied 4 for next year as well. So, before I hand the mic over to Julie, is there anything about the reading interventions I can answer for you? Is there something I left out that's a little confusing?
Diane?
It wasn't confusing. I just wondered, going from the block to the applied, you mentioned there'd be more contact. Is that because they won't have that longer break that they get during the block period? Or, and do you see them serving their two different periods at different times of the day, so they're not back-to-back?
Well, the big perk for us in terms of switching to the two different class periods is these kids were in block for two different sessions for the day. And so, that's a lot of time to be into one confined area without moving on to another class. So, we're hoping that that transition will be a little more conducive for them, along with the teacher. Okay? So, that was the whole method. In terms of that longer break, you're right, we won't have that break anymore, because it'll just be that 52-minute period, and then they'll move on to their next class. Okay. Yes. Okay, and Julie mentioned too, in years past, our block has been one semester, and we really thought it was important that the kids have the English skills all year round. And so, this method will allow that to happen.
All right, and on to our math pathway. The same thing, how this is laid out. I guess, and I want to start out too, I think one of the neatest things about this whole process is that we have groups of people coming together, looking at data on kids, and they're being placed based on ability level, where before, maybe we were targeting individual kids here and there after they were brought under someone's radar. So, here, we're being proactive, looking at data, like this year's 8th graders, and then determining who they are, and then placing them into these tracks. So, then the teachers get them the first day, we already know what level they're at and ready to go on day one. So, actually pretty exciting. With the math, I know the middle school has been here and talked to you guys. With our intensive track for grade nine, we're going to be doing the trans math, which is what they are doing in the middle school. So, we will continue with that program with our 9th grade intensive. We were just visiting up at the high school today and kind of talking about how these pathways are kind of a living document, because each year, you know, next year we'll assess again, kids will be having trans math here, but they might be coming in at a different level than they are this year. So, each year we'll have to adjust and kind of shift what programs we're doing. We might have some kids coming in that completed trans math, and will have to fit in somewhere else, and some might need to finish. So. But in grade nine, they will have, our intensive kids will have math one hour all year long, and trans math is the intervention that's chosen that will continue from the middle school. With grade nine, what our plan is right now, as far as intervention, is to fit them in where they're going to go. And depending on where that is, we're going to be looking at it next year at this time, each kid individually and seeing where they need to be. It could be that next year our grade 10 math placement pathway changes, because maybe we'll have some of those kids who are still needing some trans math. But for now, we've had, assuming that they, let's say, would finish trans math in 9th grade, they would go on to informal Algebra 1 in grade 10. And then grade 11, they could choose from informal geometry or consumer math, which at that time, to graduate from Jamestown High School, you need three credits of math. With the trans math too, we will be able to issue, that will be a general math credit, so they will be able to earn high school credit for that. So, by the time they get to their junior year, they can choose then, and that would be teacher-recommended, would informal geometry be better or consumer math? And then on to their senior year, they could choose from no math, if, you know, math is not in their future, or they could choose informal geometry, informal Algebra 2, or consumer math. So, the math is going to be something that individual kid, based on career plan, ability in that, what track we're going to place them in. And that'll be math teacher, counselor, MTSS people, administration to decide what particular path each kid will do. Any questions?
Any questions? Diane?
Yes, I, everything I've seen about MTSS, it just looks great. And I love Mr. Heinert's story of it being a lot of work, because it looks like it was a lot of work. And it looks like, to me, it's going to be an improvement for our district, once we get it in place and everything lined out. and everything lined out. One question I have about, the math brings it to mind, but it might apply to reading and English, too. Is one reason that we're switching over to MTSS is we could not get our students up to speed in math and they couldn't get those three credits? We're having to go back and pick up students that simply could not get through to graduating with their math credits?
I think math and reading in general is just, you know, the transition from, well, any school from elementary to middle school, and now middle school to high school, is how do we bridge that gap between the skills that you're learning in middle school with what you're in high school? And I see that as the biggest advantage because this has been K through 12 initiative here, where we're all meeting together to determine, hey, what are you doing at the level before us? So when we get you at the high school, we already know where you're at and we can take off. So I see that as the biggest advantage. Did that answer your question? Okay.
And another comment with that, a lot of it, too, Diana, is, you know, this is a systemic process, as Mrs. Cunberg had kind of talked about, where we kind of front-load interventions at that elementary level. And there's interconnectivity throughout each pathway. So as we go through elementary, we're going to have a number of strategic and intensive interventions, you know? And the plan is if that's consistently done, which is what we've, those pathways we've created, each year, we'll have fewer and fewer of those. And it's not, it's not so much about what classes can kids take, it's making sure that they're getting and developing foundational skills in math and reading, you know? Because those are the building block skills that they need. And so it's more about focusing on making sure that students get those skills. If we don't get it at elementary, then we get it at middle school or high school. That there's a path somewhere along the line that we're making sure that our students are getting to that benchmark level.
Heidi, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. You know, this all looks very good as far as the strategic intensive part, kind of a safety net to make sure students are placed. And there's a lot of talk about the, you know, the intensive level. But can you address also, there's four levels on here, can you also address the advanced level? How this is going to impact our students that maybe are acquiring those skills maybe at a faster rate and how they can make sure they're continuing to learn at the pace that they're capable of as well?
At this time, we look for this year at focusing on just the intensive group in terms of the intervention. By no means are we going to abandon that. Those groups, they're still catching our attention. That's why they're part of the plan. We will continue advanced placement classes. We'll continue to offer dual-credit opportunities when we can. But by no means, you know, do we feel like, like we're not paying attention to that group or they're taking a backseat to this program. Not at all. We're looking at this for this particular year coming up as saying, let's find a way to look at these kids that are below the 20th percentile, to bring them up to pace so that they have a chance. All right? And so we will continue to develop those programs as we proceed.
One other comment with that, too. I guess I see it as an advantage that if we are pulling out these students who are intensive and struggling and placing them in classes where they used to be mainstreamed with these other students that are trying to excel and move up, it's a lot easier for a teacher now, if I have a class with my intensive kids, to target them. And those kids aren't mainstreamed as much with the other kids that are trying to move on. Our classes that are benchmarked and advanced are going to be able to move on. Does that make sense?
Diane?
Can I say that is absolute common sense? And I know the mainstreaming that went on the last decade or so, a lot of times, the advanced students, I think, did suffer. And this makes complete sense to me. And I really am looking forward to seeing where it goes.
Any other questions for them? Rob?
Just to make a comment, you know, in the last couple of meetings, you've seen the elementary group, middle school group, and a high school group now of different MTSS systems. And I wanted to thank all of those groups. It really is a lot of work to have gone through, received the training, develop a plan, create the interventions. And the reality is, is, you know, when you confront the brutal reality, what we were doing wasn't working. And so you have to take a chance to reassess where you're at and develop programs at work. And these are research-based interventions and these are individuals that have really worked hard to create this, these pathways. And I appreciate all the work that everybody has gone through to make what I think is a really solid plan. So, you know, so thank you.
Thank you.
One other thing I just wanted to say, have you, I think we've all been at a meeting or somewhere where we're sitting and we're kind of lost at what's going on, you know? And I just think of these kids now that are going to be in a classroom where it's at a level where they're understanding it, how much more fun education is going to be for them. It's exciting. So, thank you.
Thank you. Moving to number six, reports from the National School Board Convention. Mindy, was it go first?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Well, thanks for the opportunity to go. It was very interesting. I jotted down a few notes about the sessions that I went to. My sessions all sort of included some sort of how to be a better board member, how to be a better board. And so I just jotted down a few things throughout the convention presentations that I thought might be good ideas. So I'll just tell you what they are, what I thought was interesting. One thing to make the board, a board meeting a little bit better, it was called Baker's Dozen Professional Development for Board Members, is to recite the mission after the pledge at each meeting. I mean, do we even talk about our mission much? Not really. Have a third grader at every meeting recite the pledge, gets their parents there and the teacher and maybe their principal. Make sure to acknowledge the teachers and aides who help make achievement. And I think we're really good about, you know, recognizing achievements. But the aides are a pretty big part of that classroom, too. So maybe we ought to invite them. On, somebody said that on their agendas, for each of their agenda, there's a little bio on a staff member. Not necessarily a teacher, it might be. It might be the bus driver. And they don't have to come to the meeting, but we just know who they are and, you know, recognize them. I don't know who our bus drivers are. I, geez, what's happening? Another idea was a board and staff or community book club on education. I know, Bob, you did a book club with your leads and administrators, and maybe we ought to do a book club on the board, you know, with some interesting, interesting educational books. And then, and they talked a lot about, in a couple of different sessions I was at, they talked about annual survey on school culture. And I think that would have been very handy for us prior to the referendum, to have some kind of, you know, what are people thinking out there? And what, you know, do they think we need new facilities? You know, that kind of thing. Another thing was more of a proactive agenda versus a reactive agenda on our board meetings. There was, you know, we don't really do, we do a little strategic plan. We have one night where we kind of do one, but, you know, there's talk, there's ideas that we could do a strategic plan that is also your living document. You have it right there with you while you're at your board meeting. And are we meeting our strategic plan? And also, when we're doing the strategic plan, maybe we, as a board, go offsite for a day. Or maybe we bring in community members and staff and teachers for an all-out strategic planning session. I'm just throwing it out there. I'll pass this around. The Wisconsin school, to get their community engaged, they do a newsletter like this to all of their postal customers. They're all taxpayers in the district. And it costs them a little bit of money, but in every newsletter, it highlights school achievements, staff achievements, student scholarships, awards, an alumni. I mean, it's kind of interesting. And the students put it together. And so they have to pay for the printing, but I could take a look at that. So that was my, I was also on community engagement and getting the board involved with the community. Another thing about surveying, this Wisconsin school, they have a very successful volunteer program. But to make that volunteer program, they've actually hired a volunteer coordinator. So it's a staff position, you know? And I don't think we're in that kind of... No, it's not. And, but, you know, because it's hard to train trainers and you have to be on top of it all the time. So I thought that was kind of interesting. Another session that I went to was about how it was a Johnson Controls Session sponsored it, and how all the buildings, like Jerome would be, would have access on his smartphone to all the building sensitivities, you know, like temperatures. He maybe has that, I don't know. But I thought that was pretty, okay, we're on top of it. Good job. And then, the other thing that I thought was pretty interesting, I walked through the vendor, you know, area. And there was a 3D program for schools. And it was on biology and geography and math. And like the biology one, they had a heart and it came out. And you could take the, you know, if you smoke, what your heart would look, I mean, it was, it was pretty interesting. I don't know. I'm supposed to get some information on that. So I thought that was good. And then we had our main speakers, but I'll let, I'll let Bob talk about that. I know he's going, he's going, I won't take your thunder. Anybody have any questions or?
Diane?
I wondered, I'm interested in the newsletter. You mentioned the students put it together. Do you think it was a journalism class? Or did they meet after school? Or did they go into that detail?
They didn't really go into that detail. I'm guessing it was probably a journalism class, because it's pretty professional. I mean, it's...
Who wants to go next? Bob? Brenda?
Boston was enlightening. It was huge. I think we had our 10,000 steps in before we even left the convention center every day. Of the two keynote speakers that we had, Dan Rather made a couple of great points in his speech. He said our children are biggest assets and that the first one through eight years of education, kindergarten through eighth grade, are crucial learning years for reading and math. He also said that he had a public education and was proud of it. The other point he made is that the teachers that influence these students should be making more of a salary, as they are the people that are molding our students into the young professionals and workforce of tomorrow. He made his point by bringing up a couple of memories he had as a student with his teachers. Robin Roberts was a great motivational speaker, pointing out that she had an opportunity to go to parochial school, but was thankful that she had a public education and is proud of it. She also said that we should not let life get us down. And her quote she used often was, "Make your mess your message." So to paraphrase, we should move forward and touch lives despite the struggles we are going through. It guides our life to help others by relating to what they may be going through. Some of the sessions that I attended was, one, how to deal with negative people and keep from becoming a negative person yourself. One of the best ways to deflate a negative person is to stick to the facts. Another point is to not give them the floor. If you know someone's a negative person, just say good morning and move on. Also attended a Google search. I am not a techie. Although I was quicker at picking up some of the stuff than a few people. And a couple of older gentlemen just left the room because they couldn't keep up. But two things I did come away with was that we do not learn at the same pace at any age. And a couple of cool search items that you didn't necessarily know as a parent. I attended a session on Parent University. That was interesting in the area of reaching parents with students and issues. One of the things that the school district did was to have several times during the day where they reached out. Life is busy, so they had a morning session from 8:30 to 9:00, a lunch talk, an after-school chat, an early evening session. They said they tend to reach more parents that way, just to try and reach them when they're at the school. The vendor booths, wow. It took up a third of the expo and it was huge. You probably could have put six or seven buses nose to nose the length of the expo. One of the companies that I was impressed was, was the EpiPens that they had in the first aid kits at every school. So with all the peanut allergies or food allergies, instead of waiting to have to race someone off to the hospital for an EpiPen, that was right there. And then another one that I thought was interesting was a company that monitored social media. If a student in the district is depressed and they're posting negative thoughts on social media, it'll come up as a flag and that company can contact the authorities or school authorities. And then they can get ahold of the parents and address the situation. And they have diffused situations that way. So, thank you for letting me attend. I enjoyed it.
Bob?
There. Echo a couple of things that we've heard already. The convention was great. Thanks for allowing us all to attend. One of the things I heard at this that I never really thought of before this convention is annually the largest gathering of elected officials in the world, which is kind of a fun thing to be a part of. I really appreciated hearing that. As was mentioned, Dan Rather and Robin Roberts were excellent. Because of my age, I probably appreciated Dan Rather a little more than Robin Roberts. A couple of other people there didn't know who Dan Rather was. Never mind. That was sad. No, they were good. One thing we commented on a little bit, I always think one of the highlights of the convention is the music groups, because it's high school music groups. I didn't think this year they were quite as up to where they've been in the past. But they were still good. The sessions that I went to, kind of, I tried to center a little bit around school law, especially some things that are going on right now that can affect our district. One, students have much more protection of free speech on social media than teachers do. Teachers placing things on social media are subject to losing their job. Students that place things on social media, it's protected by First Amendment rights. So I know that's something that the district has talked to teachers about and things, but it's just something to be careful on. Two issues that I think are going to potentially impact North Dakota. First, there is a movement right now to legalize medical marijuana. And if that does become a law, it's going to affect some of the policies that we have. Just thinking about it for a while, you all know, I think we all know, medications that are handed out in our schools to students during the course of the day. So it's conceivable that the school could be handing out medical marijuana to students that had a need for it, especially if we had a student that had cancer or something like that. That's, that's an issue. And, and we may, we may need, and I think the state needs to take a look at policies to deal with something like that. Or how are we going to deal? It's easy, obviously, it's easy to deal with something before it happens rather than after. So if medical marijuana does become legalized, it might be something that we want to take a look at. The other one that I think is even bigger, or potentially bigger, is transgender issues. That's becoming issues in other schools and other states. And is a student's sexuality determined at birth or determined by how they feel their sex is, what they feel their sex is? And how does a school deal with that with individual students? And again, I think it would be better for us to have policies in place prior to having a student walk into a principal's office or a parent calling Mr. Leck and stating a concern, rather than waiting until after and then trying to develop policies. Those, those two things were just wow, when I went to those sessions. But there are actually situations that are occurring in schools across the country now. And, and like I said, I think it's better to address them prior than after. One of the most interesting sessions I went to, we've talked about it after last, this last fall, was students as part of the school board. One of the, he wasn't a presenter, but it was actually a student, a high school student. He's the only high school student in the country that has actually voting rights on his school board. And I, he spoke a little bit, not as part of the panel, but he was just in the session as a school board member. But the individual presenters, and I think it was someone from Alaska, or they'd had a lot of experience in Alaska and it's pretty widespread up there, and in other states. But it is a growing movement across the country. They talked about the advantages of it, primarily getting students involved, possibly training school board members for the future. Maryland, they pointed out, actually has state laws and policies governing having students on the board, or student reps. One of the things that I, that I heard that was different from what I'd heard in the past is that the school boards select. At the session I was at, anyway, what they talked about the most was that school boards select the student reps. And I think the session we went to last fall or this winter, it was students, actually, election. And there's good points both ways. But if, if we're going to move forward with that... ways, but if, if we're gonna move forward with that, that's one of the things we have to talk about. Talked about having a board member act as a mentor or an anchor as, as we do now, but more than likely if it's a student, that, that would become even more important. Talked about giving more tangible support. Make sure that it's not just a, a resume builder for a student, that it does actually have some meat to it. Tangential support, some things like the name tags, like we all have, make sure they have that. Money in the budget for travel and training expenses. We go to state conventions, make sure that if we have a student on our board, that it's possible for them to attend as well. They even talked about transportation to board meetings. I don't know if in Jamestown that would be an issue, maybe in a bigger community it would. But, and if, if this becomes more prevalent across the state, we might want to encourage the, the state to have a student tract in their, at the school board's convention. I did go to Every Student Succeeds Act, which replaces No Child Left Behind. That was, one of the most interesting things I heard there is that the major dollars have been authorized, but not appropriated. So we'll see what happens in the next Congress on that. They talked about that quite a bit. And of course, the next big thing with that is, it, the bill has been passed, the regulations haven't been written yet. The Department of Education is working on that now, so everything they told us may change. Last thing that I, I really wanted to mention, I went to a session on competency-based education. I thought it was back in the nineties, outcomes based. That was the exact same thing and we've been down that road before. Like they say in education, everything just goes around. So, but it was a good convention, really enjoyed it. And, and again, thanks for allowing us to attend.
Any other questions for him or Greg?
You guys have said it all. I mean, good grief. Yeah, well, the lobster that I had at, at one place, no. The, I also attended that ESSA and it's really gonna be interesting. The thing that I like about it is it turning a lot of the power and authority back to the districts and back to the state. And I think that that's gonna be awesome. I mean, the state has to come up with a plan, but then they're going to work with the local boards to actually develop that. And I think, I mean, even all of the titles, there's some changes, but basically it's, it's bringing it back. And that whole idea of highly, highly qualified teacher requirement is eliminated. That's, that's gone, which is kind of a neat deal. But I thought that was great. And of course, that's 2017, 18 is when the state plans are supposed to take effect. And the standards are still gonna be math, reading, and science. Still, I think it's a great plan. I don't wanna touch on all the sessions. I just have a couple here. Yeah, I, I liked Dan Rather's talk. He talked about Singapore and Finland. And of course, you know, they're now the top educators and graduating the top kids. And, and some of the things I thought was interesting, he said that they take the top third of their teachers into their programs. If you're not in the top third in your class, you don't get to become a teacher. And that the teachers spend, compared to United States, 40% less time in the classroom. And yet somehow they're, they're, you know, graduating these top-rated kids. The other things, or some other points that came out was that today, people are, or businesses are looking for people that have the basic education, but they have to be able to work with people. They have to be able to communicate. And I think that's something that really needs to be taught because you can have that base education in engineering or math or whatever, but if no one can work with you, I mean, businesses finding that it's, it's not a good deal. So those are some of the soft skills that I think we, we should focus on. And yes, I attended the transgender whole deal. And really, that's, that's something that's coming down the pike. OCR isn't putting, and hasn't put any rules out on it, but, but they talked about several cases and having, you know, just non-gender bathrooms, you know, and that type of thing. And, but then also having bathrooms where someone did not wanna go into a non-gender bathroom. So it's been kind of a, an interesting thing. I think, like you said, it's better to be ahead than, than to be behind. So if that's something that we as a board need to take a look at, we need to do that. Cause we have to be sensitive to a lot of people's needs and, and without, you know, going too far. The other point I wanted to make was, let's see. I did get my 10,000 steps in every day. So, I mean, you covered a lot of ground. So I, I thought that, I thought that was great. And it talked about more training or specific training for our Title IX coordinator. They said that that's going to become a bigger, bigger role. And it's, it's really going to take up a lot of stuff because of a lot of things now gonna come under that Title IX. And that the Title IX person that's identified is going to have to really broaden their understanding and knowledge as that area grows. So I was thinking about you, Sally, and, and I know it's, I know it's a challenge already, but that's something that's, that's going to be something that's coming up. And I think we already do this, but they also said there's going to be more information coming out in dealing with pregnant and parenting students. They think that that's another focus that's actually growing. But I think we're already, you know, making adjustments for that. But that's something that's, that's coming up as well. But overall, it was a positive experience. I got to share with a lot of people and a lot of different ideas. And I'm really excited about the ESSA because I think that's going to, cause what, what Congress is saying is saying, okay, you've been asking for it, we're gonna give it to you. And so let's see what you can do. So it's not gonna have these penalties that No Child Left Behind has. And I think it's gonna be a beneficial thing for all of us. So it was a great session and, and got to meet some great people and got to meet some of our own great people there for a little while. That Thai restaurant was pretty good, wasn't it?
Any, go, go ahead, Bob?
Just one, it, I was thinking, I think there was a transgender case in South Dakota. Minnesota too. So it's not that far away, just to point that out.
Any other questions for him? Diane?
I just wanted to comment that I happened to substitute teach in civics today. And we, in one class, we watched a video about how our democracy works. And to showcase local government, they put a spotlight on school boards and city councils and county commissions. And it really gave me a sense of how important it is that the community know that we're trying to improve ourselves and get better and, and trying to do our job well. Because, you know, as this video pointed out, we're kind of the backbone of what happens with our democracy. And I just want to thank the public for allowing some of our members to go to the national convention because I've been, and it was a high watermark for me. It, I still remember things that I learned there and still enthused about the atmosphere that I found there. So I want to thank everybody who went and the public.
Thanks, Diane. No other, moving on to superintendent's report. Rob?
Just to highlight a few things. The first, I wanted to talk about, I don't know if, if board members saw it or, or members of the public saw, we had an article in the Grand Forks Herald probably two weeks ago, talking about immunizations and how immunizations have been dropping since 2000. I think it was school, well, the focus wasn't just on school-aged children, but it was on children. And dropping from about 96% vaccinated to around 88% of children, at, at least in this study. And it, it just kind of brought to mind what we're doing here in Jamestown. I thought people might be, have read that article and want to know how we're doing in terms of, you know, where that stacks up with our school district. And I, I thought I would share a little bit of that. And also with our process, I think it's important to know people have options. If, if they do not feel vaccination is for their family, which is the right by North Dakota state law, you do have an option for exemptions. Those exemptions exist for things like medical, philosophical, religious reasons. And you simply fill out a form to say, I don't, you know, I do not want to receive vaccinations, but you have to do one of the two. The issue becomes, do kids fall through the cracks? You know, which happens when you're registering thousands of kids. You know, those things can happen. And so we have been a very, taken a very diligent approach. And one of the things that, one of the things that's helped us is centralized registration. Amy does a, does an excellent job. Amy and Sandy now do an excellent job making sure that all of that's, all of that information is in place prior to kids starting school. But we have had to look back through our records and make sure that, that's really been due diligence. Making sure that kids have received all of those initial shots, booster shots, things like that, that they've, that they've met those requirements. In, in going through, I, I thought it was great. We have had a total of 11 students that we are working with to make sure that they are properly vaccinated. And that's less than half of a percent of our kids. I think that's excellent work by not only Amy and Sandy, but all of our administrator, administrative assistants at each of our buildings. That's a lot of phone calls. That's a lot of phone calls and a lot of scheduling. Angie Ulmer with, with Central Valley Health has been great, working with families to make sure that they have options for those vaccinations. I think that's been great. And we have a, a less than half of a percent also of, of exemptions. So you're talking 99% of students in our, in our district have all of, all of that information in place. And, and, and I think it's, it's really, like I said, a testament to our, our people working and making those phone calls. It's, you know, just to be very honest, that's a very high number. If you look at schools across North Dakota, that's a very, very high number. And I think it, it's one of those things that just comes down to making people aware and making sure that, that those things get done. Like I said, it sometimes could be easy to, to miss those things, but making sure that you have people in place that, that will make sure you get your paperwork in. So those individuals have really done a great job. With school meal prices, you'll see later in the agenda, I, I included a little bit of information from Section 205 of the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act that just kind of outlines how those decisions get made. We don't just arbitrarily say, we're gonna raise it 10 cents. Okay, there's calculations based on the Hungry, Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act. And I kind of outlined those a little bit. But really, in talking to Shelley Mack, what we believe has taken place here is, is they, is at the federal level, they want the meal prices in school districts to be equivalent to the value of the, of the, the free reimbursement. We get $3.13. I think that's the target. You know, that's what, from a federal level, they're wanting to see that we aren't making less on a charged meal than they're reimbursing on a free meal. You know, and that looks like that's the trend of what's happening. And so we go through a calculation and looking at weighted averages. And if you're below a certain mark, then you're at, yeah, at minimum, you have to raise a dime for that lunch meal. We're under that. So for their lunch prices, that, that is, that means a dime increase. You'll see that later in the agenda. But that's, I outlined that calculation, just so you understood, this isn't necessarily something we're saying, you know, we want to do. It's something that we're saying, we're being told has to happen. So that dime that you see is representative of this calculation. And that's where we, at minimum, have to go. They can't tell us to go more than a dime, but they can tell us to go a dime. So that's where we're at. From the adult prices, the same regulations share that, that your adult prices have to be 65 cents higher than your highest student price. So if our highest student price goes up a dime, that means adult prices go up a dime too. But that's, more than anything, I want people to understand on the board and the public that these are regulations that we work with. And, you know, that is how we fit in that calculation. One of the things I wanted to bring up from the high school MTSS report, one of the changes that will need to take place in terms of loosening some policy, high school graduation, with students that are in that intensive block for reading, what is being suggested is that we loosen that requirement for the additional social studies credit that's required. We now have four. State requires three. And for those students, we will be suggesting, and I will bring forward later a recommendation on policy, that those students that are taking that extra English support are not required to take civics. The reason being, we don't want to, for those students to see the support classes as being punitive. The other option for those students is to take away electives. I think that would be a mistake. I think what you've done is provide, the MTSS team has combined, has created a really creative solution for a way to provide supports for kids and not have them view it as punitive. Does not mean in any way that we don't believe that civics as a class is important. We absolutely do. But you're talking about a finite amount of time in a student's day. And I would rather have that choice for those students and electives. We feel, feel like those are important also. And so if you have to, to provide one, we would hope that that would be that elective, those elective opportunities. And just, again, it all comes down to foundational skills. Let's spend our time where we need to. And that's building up math skills, building up reading skills. And, you know, at this point, I think you just need to prioritize those foundation skills more than anything.
Do you have a question?
I'm not opposed to the, lowering to the state requirement of three, but do we see any problems of students passing the required civics test if we're not having them take the civics class?
That'd be something, it's a great question. I've, I've thought of that issue too. And that's something we need to work out in terms of how they're going to have access to that, to that additional support for civics. But they do more in civics class than just support that. And that'd be something that we'd have to look at also. Again, it just comes down to where you're prioritizing your time. The, the skills that those kids are going to be supported in just have to be prioritized for us.
Greg?
Yeah, and I, I tell you, I think that's an awesome approach, I think. Because if they're getting that education value and we're not letting them get that credit for it because they have to take a certain class to get it, I totally agree with you. And that was actually, I forgot to mention, one of the sessions that I went to, you know, it, it was kind of based on that theory. But one of the points it made out was if you have this, this, let's say an athlete that plays tennis, and then you require him to go to gym and get credit. They said, how much sense does that make? They're, they're playing tennis. They're, they're, they're doing it. And there may be some, you know, specifics in there, but they're saying that we need to take a closer look at what they're really learning and, and not just be so stuck on the rules that, that we miss the point of, of education. So I thought, I think that's a great approach.
Yeah, I, I agree. And again, you know, I, I feel like to make the point, nobody is saying that civics and North Dakota studies are not an important class. And we're talking of, we're talking a handful of students that we have, through data, determined needed a little bit of additional support in reading, or additional support in math. You know, we're spending a little bit of extra time to ensure that these kids get to benchmark in, in those skills. And so, like I said, there, there's a finite amount of time in a day. And, and, you know, we have to prioritize what that would be. Later, next meeting, I'll have a resignation and release a contract request for you that I'll recommend that you approve. We had contracts out early this year. We have time to, to certainly fill that position. I hate to lose good teachers, but we understand when, when opportunities come up for people and family opportunities happen, we want to be able to support those. So I'll bring that. It, I just got it today. Can't add it to the agenda today, but in our next meeting, I'll, I'll approve that and, or I'll recommend that you approve that. But like I said, hate to lose a good teacher, but we understand that those situations come up. Unless you have questions, I think everything else I have is on the agenda later.
Any other questions, Rob? Diane?
I was just gonna say, so much for that civics speech that I just made a few minutes ago. But I do agree with you that it's a limited number of students. And I wondered, my question is, what did those students do before they did have to take the four social studies? And were they passing or was it working at all?
Absolutely, it was working. I, like I said, nobody is saying that the, that we shouldn't. Absolutely it was working, like I said, nobody is saying that we shouldn't have the civics, you know, the civics class, the difference is, is we have one extra credit than is required by state law, you know, we have that additional credit, and so, this would allow this flexibility, kind of like Greg was talking about with ESSA, you know, just providing a little bit of, instead of focusing on the rules, you're providing flexibility so things can happen to meet a kid's needs, just like ESSA provides flexibility so schools can meet their needs, you're providing enough flexibility that students, that we can meet their needs, too.
And I just wanna go on the record. Is saying that I totally agree, and that I trust the MTSS team to come up with the best strategic plan, basically.
Any other questions for him? None? Moving on to old business, any old business? None, moving to new business, we have nothing under activities, building and grounds, is there a motion to approve the summer projects and building fund update? Motion by Gail, seconded by Bob, any discussion? Rob, you want, oh, Bob?
Are we doing the elevator at Lincoln? I saw down in the, down below, that was one of the tier ones. I thought it was. You're right, it's not. Okay, my mistake, thank you.
I just wanna walk through this a little bit, so you know what you're approving here, too. If you look down at the bottom, I'd focus on the district tab of this spreadsheet, there's a lot of additional information in there on specific projects, but I think the meat is in, is in the first page, it outlines the cost of all the priorities, and these are just projections, of course, and I'll be recommending that you approve levels one, two, and three. I have also outlined a few areas that are gonna need additional, building fund opportunities, building fund funding, safety updates, roofing needs, I've included carpet as a block amount instead of doing it individually per building, annual boiler maintenance, district-wide painting, so rather than, again, breaking that down into what that cost is per building, we just have a block amount, and then the capital projects plan that we talked about from consolidated construction, and putting a block amount of money in there, that's around eight hundred and eight thousand dollars in summer projects, and then, at the beginning, at the top of that district page, we show the building fund balance and then the estimated balance at the end of the year, so that would take us from, you know, one point three nine million down to one point one eight million throughout the course of the revenue we generate and then our expenses, but that will be, you know, in a nutshell, I wanna fund the top three priorities out of five, and then these additional blocks of money designated to those various projects like roofing, the capital projects plan.
Questions? Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to number three, we have nothing under curriculum finance, is there a motion to approve the Arts Center agreement for the 2016-17? Motion by Mindy, seconded by Greg, any discussion? Hearing none, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to letter B, is there a motion to approve the activities fee for 2016-17 school year? Motion by Brenda, seconded by Diane, any discussion? Hearing none, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to C, is there a motion to approve the food service prices for the 2016-17 school year? Motion by Greg, seconded by Gail, any discussion? What's that?
Ten cents.
Ten cents? Rob?
Ten cents for lunch, no charge increase for breakfast, we are not required to do breakfast.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. The general fund balance, that's just there for the information, Sally, or? Yep. Motion to approve the financial reports. Motion by Bob, seconded by Gail, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. There a motion to approve the hire of Danica Smith as a third-grade teacher for Lincoln Elementary, BA Step Two, salary of forty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars for the 2016-17 school year? Motion by Terry, seconded by Gail, any discussion? Hearing none, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Letter B, is there a motion to approve the summer school contracts? Motion by Brenda, seconded by Diane, any discussion? Hearing none, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to letter C, is there a motion to approve the position change for Phyllis Clemmons from assistant principal to the lead building principal? Motion by Mindy, seconded by Bob, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Is there a motion, moving to letter D, a motion to approve the administrators' master agreement 16-17 and 17-18 school year? Yeah. What motion is that? Motion by Bob, seconded by Gail, discussion? Would like to just go over what, I mean, I was one of the negotiators, and the cost for the agreement is, for the first year is fifty-four thousand thirteen dollars, and the second year cost is thirty-nine thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars. The next one was agreed was the superintendent reassigned the elementary principal, which we did, duties of elementary principals prior to June 30th, so it'll be done with the issuance of administrative contract with assignments as outlined above, and then the board tentatively approved, or we did approve, the payment of unused personal leave beyond what is carried on for the next contract, though, year, those days would be compensated for two hundred dollars a day. Is there anything else, Bob, that we, I think that was, pretty much was it, and any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We have nothing under policy and procedures or tuition, items for future agenda. If there is something that comes up, just let myself or Rob know, and we'll get it on the agenda. Meetings to be scheduled, we have the regular school board meeting coming up May 2nd at 5:15 here in this room, we have the year-end staff social, May 10th at 3:30 in the middle school cafeteria, we have the GED graduation coming up on Wednesday, May 18th at 5:30 to 8:30 at the James Valley Career Tech Center, and we should have, I mean, some board, at least one board member there for that. I'll try to make it myself, so, so, okay. And then we have the high school graduation on Sunday, May 29th at Civic Center at 2:30, and we should have at least three board members there, but if there's more, I mean, that's more the merrier, so whoever shows up, shows up, we'll just meet down on the west side, down on the lower level, so. Brenda?
Are we having a second board meeting in May?
We should have one, yeah.
You have two, it's the summer, just starting in June, or we have just one. Yeah, we'll just be listed on the next agenda. Yep.
Who's that? Heidi?
Roger, since probably the next meeting or two will be the last one, the students are in session, maybe we could see if someone, even if the student council president isn't available, maybe they could just send somebody else to give us a report, kind of, to finalize before the school year's out.
And then the second board meeting is May 16th at 5:15, so. Any other, oh, Greg?
I just had another point when you asked for people to attend the graduations, I think you should know a solid number, so they know how many chairs is set up.
That's true, too, so wait, she let Amy?
And for the program, yeah.
So, is there?
Why would you, Diane, why are you over here?
I gotta embarrass you.
Greg, you have another?
Yeah, I had a, was there gonna be anything with the transition house this year?
Yes, I was just gonna ask.
What? I haven't been to anything yet, so I...
We'll get you information.
All right.
Diane, did you have a question?
Just double check that, 'cause I know one year it was not good.
The transition? Yep, most definitely. So, any other questions, or just remind you to right-click on your adjournment to assess the meeting, and the meeting is adjourned.